iPhone. Ninety twenty six thirty and I would like to call. It's meeting the July sixteen of the select board. The kind of measure divided to see the order. Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Anne says, yes. Is there is Kathy on remotely? No. Okay. When we can be right. So. The first. Item on the agenda is um application from Gordon Turner to join the conservation mission. Does anyone have questions? You work with.
Yeah, I I I know Gordon not really well, but I know him well enough. And he he's going to be a tremendous asset, I think, on the Conservation Commission. My only question would be is they have a lot of. Site visits, and I'm sure you've spoken with Steve Gang, and he says this is what the deal is. At various times, I'm not sure when those times are, and I'm now liaison of this constant calm, so now I've got to figure that out too. When you go on a few of those, but how does that fit with your schedule?
Yeah, I. If I am able to have a flexible work schedule, so I.
Okay.
On occasion when needed, so I think just a little bit of notice, I probably arrange this.
Good. Well, you come as advertised, a tremendous tremendous job and work with the with the water task force, which is just about done, so. We're really very appreciative of everything you contributed there. So that's great.
Um. You come highly recommended. John says you good, then I'll go back.
I think Conservation Commission is one of those that has. Schoolwork as well as. So you're prepared for.
Yeah, I've been told that there's, you know, reading at a time uh the proposals and. Perfect to learn to get up to speed with what the rules and regulations are that. You know, in talking with current members, they said. Can kind of do that on the job. There's also courses available to stay.
So Kathy, just trying this.
Okay. Um, for those who can't see Kathy. Lana has just joined us, Kathy, do you have any questions for Gordon Turner?
I do not.
Okay, this is going to be short. Um. I will educate the motions. Um, to um. Appoint Gordon Turner for the Conservation Mission, then do you have the is is it a three year term?
It's on your.
It's on your sheet.
So. One one year.
Yeah, I believe, thank you.
Okay.
Control vacancy or a one year term.
I'll make that motion to appoint, uh, what'd you say, one year term?
Term to expire June thirtieth.
Okay, yes, the point point uh Gordon for uh. A one year term, Gordon Turner for one year term.
So it's filling.
Filling in another spot, yeah.
Yep, exactly.
Second.
Any further discussion? Meeting ready though. Brian.
Yes.
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 John says, yes. Kathy.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. The time is lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Great. Great. Thanks, Gordon.
Nope, no. Okay. And um. Now we've got Elizabeth Nicholas. Um, who is. Uh. Applying for a term on winter field to expire next June thirtieth. That's the one year you're filling in for someone. Um, John, do you have any questions?
Uh, I know Betsy better than I know Gordon. And she is a doer, there is no question about that, and I guess you you've kind of been ex officio on this committee, helping out with Winthrop Field, because you live there.
I live there.
Across the street.
Yeah, when my dad was on it, then I would attend and support him in his volunteer work.
Okay, alright.
So I have worked with them already.
So you're familiar with the responsibilities and you've you've spoken with, who is the chair of the the uh Winthrop Committee, right?
Mike.
Mike, is it Mike? Okay, fine. So good, so you've spoken with him. Who's across the street from you.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Great, no questions, I I think it's a, I think you're a good fit.
Right?
No, just thank you for stepping up.
We have a work day tomorrow, anyone want to join us?
Oh, really?
I just bought waiters and and. They're not going to come in till tomorrow afternoon, and I'm so upset.
Actually, I have, I think I'm busy that day.
Yeah. What are you doing um tomorrow?
Tomorrow, I I think we're going to be cleaning up around the pond. Pulling cattails.
Uh huh.
Wow.
So I have knee boots, but I don't have waiters, but I bought a chest, a pair of chest waiters, so I can. Get in and get dirty.
Ready. Kathy, any questions?
No, she seems like a wonderful fit.
Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion. Um, open number two, Brian. Right here.
Oh, that's me.
That's nice.
I move the select board to appoint Elizabeth Nicholas to the uh Winthrop Field Committee for term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, to fill the remaining term.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Meeting ready, Ryan.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
I say yes. So congratulations, I guess.
Happy Friday. I guess well. Babe, yes.
Sorry, Kathy. Out of sight, out of mind. Or.
I should be inside in about ten minutes.
Was she driving?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
She she's just got a new granddaughter.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, did they name her Independencia?
No.
Okay.
To grow up with.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And.
Much, much.
I'm sorry, your waiters won't be there in time.
Somehow I don't think I'll stop you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, um. We have. A little time um. Before we're supposed to talk with Sean Zen. Um. And um, are there any liaison updates?
The Pine Free Fields are about two weeks behind. Schedule, they have some ADA issues that to be solving, so they were shooting for the end of June. Obviously now two weeks processing through July.
Okay.
Uh. To your point, yes, the discussion has been had. About naming.
Okay, good.
They're not prepared to come up with a name, but they had some ideas, and so at least it was kicked around prior to using it just to get. And then uh pickleball, which we can discuss at a later time, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think pickleball is on for two weeks.
And um I I can tell you that the letters for. The uh water task force that are going to the top four hundred, actually it's close to the top three hundred and fifty users. Uh, they were picked up today, so they will be delivered tomorrow to these three hundred and fifty folks, and we'll see what kind of feedback we get over the next week or so. But they have um been printed and they have uh they've gone out. Um.
Just just continue that for a minute, so you'll have the water rate hearing at your. At July seventeenth.
That's correct, yes, and and by that time we will also have some.
Input back from, yes.
Input at the same time. So that's, that's the schedule that we're on. And uh. The only other thing with regard to the DPW, I sat through a um. Um, a meeting of the uh stormwater um. Management plan. They had a, they had a meeting, I guess, at the very, very end of June, I guess they have one annual meeting. And Chuck keeps chucking that and that keep on top of that pretty well, it's it's managing, well, there's an engineering, outside engineering firm that manages all of that. And at this point, because some of the outflows from some of the storm drains are well over a hundred years old. They discover new ones every year, but that number's going down, we're at about one sixty, and all of these outflows go into either the ocean, or they go into any of one of the local streams. And these are pipes that, as I say, were put in many, many years ago. And they do check all of the storm drains and assay if there are any problems or issues with regard to contamination and try and chase it down. They went on this past year. But it's an annual uh meeting that they have with their engineering, uh, the engineering proof, group, which is in Danvers, that um. They have the end of every June, so they're on top of the stormwater uh. Stormwater situation here in town, and I I I don't think they're going to find very many more outflows, most of the outflows from most of the streets have been. Found at this point.
Those, it's it's something called MS. Or SSR. But it's a a new federal state set of regulations that we have to comply with. Uh, and so. Last couple, three years now, maybe four years. So, yes, the.
Yeah.
They're staying on top.
They 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 clean out the. Each catch basin must be cleaned out at least once a year, and of course, they keep a record of that. And some of those catch basins. Fill up with junk faster than others, so they may be on a slightly different schedule, but they they check every single one at least uh. At least once a year, and then they do random checks of looking for E. coli or other contaminants that might be there, and then look for sources. And they haven't had any, they found some of that sort of thing, but they haven't found any major sources for the. Uh contaminants of uh. Sources of contaminants that would be a concern. So they're good.
Kathy.
She's getting out of the car.
It might be a transition.
Yeah.
Yeah, not quite, I I don't have any liaison updates.
Okay.
Okay. Um. North, why um? Will set them. Quite happy since the chat meeting. Okay. The. Um. Consent agenda. Um. Does anyone have comments on the minutes of April thirteenth or June sixth?
Back on schedule? I don't know. Why am I looking up there?
I know, we're still, we're still a little.
Wear a little head. Okay, fine.
About eight minutes.
Yep, I just thought you run a good meeting. Let's just.
Um.
No. I've read the minutes.
I read the minutes.
I read the minutes.
Kathy?
No, I need to abstain, I did not get a chance to read the minutes.
Um. I guess the.
We we have, I mean.
Okay. So I look for, I move to approve the minutes of April thirteenth and June sixth.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, and Kathy is abstaining. Um. We're in here, we have the annual appointments, which we've had. A couple of times.
Uh, it's down toward the end. Yeah.
Um, ah, yeah, it's between my.
I have one minute.
Okay, there's a. The um. I think the reappointments that we have this time are the three year terms on the Board of Appeals. Um. For Brian Solacy. As first alternate and James Decker as second alter- alternate. There.
Motion to approve those appointments?
Nine.
Some reappointments.
Yeah.
Showing up.
Okay.
That's my first choice.
Um. Meeting ready? Um, always in favor, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay. Nice. Um. Accepting the resignation of my client from Parks and Rec and also from the. Community Preservation Commission. Is there a move to accept? The resignation?
I'll make, I'll make a motion, we gotta regrettably to accept his resignation.
Second.
Ready? Kathy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes. I'm sorry that happened and. Um. And another conference. Um, actually, perhaps we can take these next three together. Which is the. Surrender of the mooring of the alcohol license for for the mooring, which has gone out of business. Approval of the Hoover Fund grant. For bicycle racks, the bike and pedestrian committee. Um. And the special. Permit for Cape Town kids. So any. Part of any of those that needs discussion?
Good, no, I'm good, I move we uh approve them. I'm sorry.
I'm I'm good as, I'm good as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Then.
I'll make a motion to approve those three items.
Second.
Meeting ready? Kathy? We're making this very hard for you, Kathy.
Sorry, I just couldn't come up with fast enough, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay. Um. It's now. Three minutes left. These special items are all long. Is there anything short on my dinner table?
Um, sure, I can do a few things here. Um. Uh, just that we will. Uh, schedule for quarterly reviews next round at your next meeting. So both myself and the chief of share, and then um if you think it'd be appropriate, I would also have. Um, new fire chief. Jake Neely, come on, and we'll just talk about some of your goals or. Um, areas of priority that you see.
I think that would be very good.
Um, so I think, yeah, I think that'd be a nice way to start.
Can we fit all that in on the seventeen?
I think we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jake is, I mean, I'm interested, I mean, he's interested in our thoughts, but. We're interested in his thoughts, so I just thought, I don't know if that's enough time for him to say. Assess the situation, and this is what my thoughts are.
Yeah, no, we we, you know, do some follow ups.
Okay, fine.
But I think it's a good, a good uh initial conversation.
Fine.
So the intention is to do that on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
All of those things, thanks.
Yeah. Uh. So, yeah, the subject like that will have. Be written. Uh. And then, so the the next two items that I have were to talk about. Next steps for both the rotunda. The options and also on the vulnerability action plan. Um, rotunda is a bit more of a pressing need to keep it moving, just in terms of wanting to pick an option so that we can keep going with design work. So that we can uh.
I.
Get ready for grant applications and also motor funding. So, so on the rotunda. Again, do you want to set up a special meeting for that? Do you think?
I. I think it would be a good idea to have a meeting. Um, as a, as a, as a. As a forum. Because I would like to hear from more people in town. I think this is. Now icon and. Uncomfortable making. Selecting one of those.
Yeah, I'd like to hear some uh input, and I've got my ideas each way I would name, but I'd sort of like to hear what other people think. Is.
So do you want to carve out an hour at a future meeting, or do you want to? Set it as a separate meeting? This sort of piggybacks into a later conversation about the the open.
Yeah.
The open forums that you're thinking of doing as well.
Yeah.
Well, I think the open forum can probably wait until fall. But this shouldn't. So. And. I will be away. From the end of July until the first of September, I I will be able to dial in, but I would like to be present for that, for that one.
So, so you'll be here for the seventeenth?
Seven, uh, yeah, I'll be here at least until the twenty seventh.
So we could do one after the seventeenth, they can do a standalone.
Yeah.
I'll be gone from the twenty, twentieth to twenty fourth.
Recording and talking.
I think the question really is, do we want to have it a separate event? Or part of a?
Yeah.
That's really the key question. Okay.
Standalone or a.
And I I'm inclined to agree with that, because I think it'll just suck up all of the time in your meeting. And you wind up getting backed up, and I I think it probably. Check with, is that something that would be held right here?
I I think so, unless you anticipate.
Once we get a a sense of what the community input's going to be on this.
It's hard to predict how many people will show up versus.
Summertime.
Virtual versus a person, it's always hard to to judge that. Um.
It would be nice.
You know, versus using, you know, cafeteria or something in high school.
Uh. I'm I'm okay here, I I I don't have a feel for how many. They are, they're conditioned, you know, what's wrong with this picture?
Might shorten up the meeting too.
Well, it's also there. Any number of people can can join if they want to. Virtuals and and the facilities here are much better for that.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a point, you've got, we've we've got a.
Yeah.
A system that we know how it works.
So we could look at that last week of July.
Mm hmm.
Potentially, then. Week of the twenty fourth. Twenty fourth is the Monday.
When do you get back?
I fly late on the twenty fourth, so twenty fifth, twenty sixth, you know, how about that Thursday? Something going on that Thursday?
This is July.
Twenty seventh or something going?
Twenty seventh, this.
I come back, I leave on the twenty fourth, on the twentieth rather. And I'm back on the twenty fourth, so twenty fifth, twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, twenty eighth, the whole weekend, then Monday.
And are you gone on the twenty seventh or you're?
I will leave after the, I'll leave on the twenty eighth.
You'll be there this one. Okay.
When is Becky back, which her travel schedule by then?
Yeah, she'll be back.
She's sagged, so.
The twenty sixth, the twenty seventh, I did not want to conflict with Concert in the Park, I mean, a lot of the people.
Yeah, yeah.
In this one.
Yeah. So I mean, Thursday, the twenty seventh, that'd be a good.
Okay.
Good time.
Right.
It's fine.
You know, get it in the. Um. The tide and.
You're gonna be.
Twenty seven.
I may have to zoom you out. Uh, but we also should have our engineer, the consulting engineers available, so it'll be contingent on.
Yes.
Making sure it works for them.
So the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, any of those days.
Are there any other meetings scheduled for this from that date?
To double check. But let's, let's.
Are you, are you nodding your head, Deb, yes, there are?
No, I should double check. Yeah, no matter.
Twenty six, twenty seven are the preferred.
We'll look at the twenty sixth or twenty seventh.
Yeah, okay.
Trying to make fun of those words.
Fine.
Six thirty.
I think it's important enough to uh. Involve the community.
I am not looking for. Defending another. Well, it's not a decision without consulting. Um. Okay, uh, we are now.
You're 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 good now.
To a point. Um, then.
Son.
Son.
Senior.
He is not attending.
He's not attending, okay.
It's on it anyway.
Uh, he's on it and he.
What happened is that we've got. We've got just a background, James Mitchell is resigned. Okay, he was a full voting member.
Mm hmm.
Okay, well, okay, so Sean as a, as an alternate would obviously be the first one to move up.
Mm hmm.
Okay, and then we'll look for uh. We have another candidate.
Yeah, you just sent me the uh gift box, so they'll be coming in on probably the seventeenth.
And that'll take care of that.
Sky, I don't, can't remember his name.
Rob, Rob Scott.
Rob Scott, that's.
Building is, former building is building inspector, so I mean, he's got a lot of uh experience in this. You know, what I would try to do is I would probably hang on. As a full member for about six months while. Rocking out his feet wet. And slide into that alternate, because in fact, in that alternate position, if that works.
We just appointed you as an alternate, though.
Fine.
We're putting you as an alternate.
Why wasn't, I was never an alternate, how do you reappoint when I was?
No, no, I'm sorry, you had to be, yeah.
Whatever, okay, I'm good with that, no, so, yeah, we're fine, we'll make it work. Always do.
No.
Sarah and at the helm, we're all, we're all set.
So.
So do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion to uh appoint Sean Zahn. As a full member to the zoning board of appeals, term to expire in June of two thousand twenty six, is that correct? Yes, two thousand twenty six, so that's three years. Do that, okay. So I make that motion.
Second.
Meeting ready to vote?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay, um, we now have. The Reserve Fund Interdepartmental Transfer. You want to go through them one by one?
Nice.
You can, you can vote them as a group. Yeah, if that's what you want.
Um, actually, was everybody had a chance to look at?
Mm hmm, yeah.
Um, Kathy? I realize you felt a little busy this week.
Yeah, I did have a chance to look at at them, I did.
Do you have any questions about?
Well, just on the compensation study. Um. I I guess I want to make.
We're talking. The compensation study.
I'm. Oh, I'm sorry, we're not on um discussion. We're on reserve, we're on reserve fund?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I skipped a line item, I've I've no question on those.
May I, I I just have a question in terms of um sources of funds. Now, a lot of these, it's moving money around because some. Some budgets aren't spent down and seeing where they had money there, okay, that's not a problem. So um. But there is a certain amount of new money. That's coming in from fund balance, and in some instances, you're taking from a fund balance, which is affecting the balance sheet rather than just moving things around on your budget.
It's not coming from the fund, that's coming from the reserve.
Fund, I should say.
The reserve fund, which is a budgeted amount.
Okay, that's a budgeted amount as well.
About, so so the Finance Committee's reserve fund has a fixed amount every year.
Do you think?
Um.
Which is?
I want to say a hundred sixty five thousand for this current year, it's something like that.
It varies from.[1723.14]
It has varied a little, you know, ten thousand plus or minus.
All right, so it's all coming from budgeted monies that are just being moved around and that's, well, they say, you said seventy six thousand out of a hundred and sixty, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
And these monies this year were well, two hundred to two fifty. That's the typical number each year, I guess.
We are often, you know, between two and three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Is what we will typically move around.
Mm hmm. Okay. Good, and I have, I have no questions. All there.
Okay, um, in that case, I would look.
And then there were the the additional ones.
There, there, uh, yes, there are.
Yeah, there were three.
Hi.
Bye. Yes. Yes. Front and back. Right.
And for Kathy's benefit. Of. The first one is for four thousand dollars. Uh, you want to be transferred from health insurance to IT expenses. Um, because pre-computer crash and had to be replaced because they weren't able to be, um, repairs. Well, the second. Is for five thousand dollars, also from health insurance. For police expenses. For additional training for new hires, which was higher than expected. And the third, also for five thousand dollars. Is from health insurance. Of. Uh. For. The, the.
So engine one, the pump.
Engine one, the pumper failed on the twenty first of June. Not, I think, for freezing this time.
Correct.
And the five, it cost five thousand dollars to repair. Um, and that one, I think I would like. Is there any further expense explanation?
Uh. Trying to remember the details.
Okay.
Of this. It's not coming to me as I sit here. Uh. Yeah, I'm I'm not, I'm, I, I, I have them, I just couldn't.
Yeah.
We can get them to you.
And the next. Is for six thousand dollars. Which is also from the health insurance. For facilities expenses. Um. For repairing the elevator several times. Which seems like a reasonable thing to do, I guess. The final one. Is for twenty five hundred dollars. For recreational expenses, the same beach expenses. Um. And what it says is that the plumbing and off-season sanitation was more than anticipated. That, clear? Does anyone have any questions?
Just curious, so how how did the year come out? Or do we know yet?
You don't have a bottom line number yet.
Oh, yeah, okay, no, it's.
Good, early, but we will, we will certainly end the year, you know, in the black.
Okay.
In terms of the revenues will be higher than what we budgeted and overall expenses are lower than what we're budgeting.
So both revenues are higher, expenses are lower, okay?
And and how do we happen to have so much money left over in the health?
So it's, um. You know, each, you know, family plan, we contribute a little over eighteen thousand to a family plan, so we will carry a couple of extra. Any plans in the budget because we don't know if someone's going to switch from a single to a family. Uh, so. We we typically will have. Uh, you know, we budget, you know, fifty, seventy five thousand more in that account. In case, um, and someone, uh, switches, you know, their their spouse perhaps have insurance. And now they're coming out of the talent insurance, or someone as an individual switches to a family plan.
Mm hmm.
Uh, so that's why we have.
That that's something that we would expect to have here.
Yes.
Here.
Yes, that is very typical for us to have those. Those dollars.
Okay. And it really doesn't go the other way very often.
In terms of.
Somebody from a family plan goes to a single plan.
Uh, that.
It can happen.
Or some.
I don't need the details.
We will have a employee who will opt out and and take us.
Oh, so I get to get all the spouses.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Depending on, depending on, uh, the, you know, the spouse.
Is the policy under those circumstances, do they get more money or they?
We do have an opt out.
Okay, and we get more money, okay. Uh, some.
A a location set that to to think about doing that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood.
Kathy, do you have anything? You want?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, um, in that case. So this one is Ryan's.
Me.
Number four.
Thank you. I move the select board approved the reserve fund and interdepartmental end of year transfers requests.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are you getting results? Kathy?
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay. Um. Don't forget that form of this decision. At exactly seven oh five, you can have the discussion.
Well done, well done.
Do you want to? Explain what is going on with senior center, sorry?
Sure, so, um, so we're actively pursuing three possibilities. Uh, each of each of those options are in the in the central village area. Uh, each one has the pluses and minuses to them, and I would say that. We, uh, if if progress can continue to be made. Then my hope would be that we could bring a proposal to the voters at the fall down meeting. If you're inclined, obviously you can wait till the annual, but, uh. Uh, it might make sense to to move it forward to the foot, to the fall down meeting if everything can come together.
Is this something that would we want to get?
Yeah, of this finance.
Uh, it could, or, uh, again, depend on much of the fund balance you want to tap.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I also see fundraising being an important piece of of the second.
Mm hmm.
I think that, uh, if the town, one model might be for the town to purchase.
Mm hmm.
The property and then fundraise for the needed construction renovation, depending on. Which which of the three we go forward. Well. So I I could see it being a combination of tapping into the the fund balance. And also inviting on a fundraising campaign.
Hmm. I was just. Curious because I'm. It would be nice if I have to have another election.
Right.
Which we would if we. And put on debt and you know, exclude it.
So, um, I'm encouraged that we're able to advance these three properties. I think they all have their, as I say, they all have their pluses.
Hmm.
Uh, obviously, there's some drawbacks as well, as we can fully vet them. And, uh, get closer to. Better agreement, then we can go go public with them and have a have public input as well. So I see that happening over these next few months in into the fall.
Is the expectation that probably only one of these will materialize or? Is it possible?
Well, you know, it's at at some point.
Been a long slog.
It's been a long slog. Uh, I mean, at this point, I would keep all three moving forward.
Okay.
Uh, but at some point, yes, we're going to need to decide, okay, we're going to advance number one instead of two or three.
Say the others were not.
And and we'll pursue that that one and and hopefully it's, we bring it across the finish line. Uh, so that's. Over the next couple, couple of months, we we, you know, keep kicking the tires on these three. And see which one you think really is the best option. And then later in the fall, okay, we you make a decision, yes, this is the one we want to advance, and then we bring it forward to the voters.
Is is anticipated that all of these probably are somewhat similar in cost? Or they're?
Similar, but there's a range.
Yeah, I I understand there's a range, but it's not like a ten X range.
No, no, not a ten X, we're probably talking. You know, the range of two and a half to four and a half.
Okay, so it's a two X range. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm sort of pulling numbers out a little bit on the, but.
That's all right.
Kathy?
Yes, um, so. I I like the fact that we're looking at three different options. I agree, we need to continue to push them forward. But I hope we wouldn't be discussing any specific direction or making a decision on a specific direction. Until we get a peek at the facilities master plan that Chuck is working on. Because I would expect that, you know, this to be a subset of that.
Correct, so we'll we'll keep advancing these three and then, uh, it'll actually ducked up pretty nicely with the with the facility plan planning that's going on because that'll be ready.
Right.
By the end of the summer as well.
Exactly, and I I guess I I would also put the rotunda in that category as well. Um, certainly, we need lots of public input on both of these items. But I think they need to be, a a decision needs to be made in an integrated way. Um, aligned with the overall facilities plan for the town.
Yeah, no, that that makes perfect sense.
If you see something in the chat. I don't know whether we don't. If that's anything in the chat, and because chat.
It's actually from Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, let me let me turn off the chat. I'd like to do that.
The.
Okay, so.
That's the senior center, um, the compensation study, again, Greg, give me.
Yeah, so as as we've been discussing, uh, moving forward with, look at department head compensation in particular. Uh, you. We are moving forward with, um. Uh, assuming you agree here, moving forward, hiring folks from the Collin Center out of Boston UMass. Collin Center is a, uh, municipal think tank. Uh, where they do provide consulting services to communities. Uh, for fee, it's not free, it is for a fee, but because it's, uh. Intergovernmental, because it's from its state university, we can directly contract with them. Uh, so they have a scope of of work that they have proposed, collecting comparable compensation from neighboring communities. As well as similarly, uh. Size and position communities, not just, not just neighboring communities. And looking at department leaders of their pay and also looking at, uh. Different systems for advancing through your in your career as a department leader. Uh, we don't have a formal system in place in terms of, uh, department leaders advancing. You know, sort of, it's, there's not another promotion to be given typically in in town.
Yeah.
Uh, but there are ways to recognize, uh, excellent work and use a service that we want to take a look at.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and so that's the second element. Then the third element is to. Uh, take a look at our staffing to see if we can. Change, uh, slightly alter the sort of second in command for for different departments.
Mm hmm.
Uh, as a way to look at succession plan, as a way to build in, um, a feeder system, if you will. For, obviously no guarantees, but you can, you can be grooming in-house folks who can then move up to that. Department leader position, uh, when a department leader retires or or moves on to a different opportunity. So those are the three elements of the, uh, of the study.
Department leaders include the, uh, public safety office.
Yes, yes. That's to be the two chiefs.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and it would, uh, yeah, the other department heads. So that's the game plan. We would, uh, it's about an eight-week study. We would wrap this up by the first of September. Uh, and it should be timely for us in terms of looking at, uh, the budgeting process as well.
Mm hmm.
So that's, that's where that stands. If you have questions or suggestions, I'm happy to hear them.
Yes, thanks, Greg. Um, so I'm glad we're doing this. I think it's terrific. Um, two items I will mention. Um, I hope as part of the, as part of what you described. It includes a look at performance management. You that may have been what you've alluded to at number two on your three item list.
Right, right, yes.
Because you, and and so, and I would be cautious about. Planning to implement compensation changes before the performance management pieces are, compensation changes usually come at the end. First, you change your system, your performance management, your goals alignment, all of that, and then. Um, there can be some aspects of compensation management that that could be implemented in parallel, but, um. Merit pay per se is usually a culmination of a change in a performance management system. So I would just be a little cautious about. Um, uh, the timing of what you're proposing, and the sooner the better on the performance management side. Um, and the other item regarding the succession planning. Um, I I do want to make sure that we. Um, are looking at job rotation as a means of succession planning as well, not just, um. Uh, making current positions more senior, which tends to add cost to a small town's budget. Um, if if we do feel we need, you know, the study recommends that, then I would. I I think there may be some parallel investments in automation that we need to push really hard on. So that we change, you know, the structure here, but not increase the cost to the town. So, um, I just want to make sure the compen, it it's titled compensation study, but I feel like we're doing. We're we're looking at more than that, which I think is good. Um, but I don't want to, I don't want to be misled by the term compensation study.
Yep, yep.
Kathy, would you explain to me what, um. Job, what do you think of the job rotation? Yeah, I I.
So, and a lot of, um, you know, it's easier to do in a larger organization, but when you're trying to prepare people for leadership roles. One of the things it's good to do is to literally rotate jobs, you know, have them. Uh, it can be very short term, or it can be, um, job shadowing. But basically, you you, and these are for non-union positions, obviously. But you have people rotate, um, and work in other departments, and it's a way of expanding their. Thinking, um, especially as, you know, if one department is kind of a feeder department. Um, for another group's process, it helps to understand how the information they're providing is being used. So. So drop, you literally, you know, swap jobs for a short period of time or. Uh, job shadowing is another technique, but basically giving exposure to a department or an organization outside your your core, so to speak.
I'm I'm imagining Drake. In, uh, Nate, rather, Nate, in the, in the accountant's office and not getting very far, but.
No, I understand, but like I said, that's why I said there's there's rotation and there's shadowing, you know? And you'd be surprised what you can learn when you shadow, shadow somebody else's department. But part of why I'm mentioning it is because ultimately, one of these individuals, who's a direct report to Greg, might want Greg's job. And if they only have experience with their one discipline, they won't be prepared. So, um, it's really, you, um, you you got to think about it. Career planning is kind of like chess a little bit. You you got to think a few moves ahead and and. Who needs to learn what to prepare for what role? You know, it's it's a very deliberate thing. It's not a haphazard thing.
Any other? John?
No, no. I think I'm I'm good. I'm looking forward to the results here in a couple of months.
I'm going to see what other towns are doing.
Yeah.
I think this part of it.
Approximately how much are they going to charge us?
Uh, yes, it's. Yes.
Okay.
Fine, so Adam three, uh, following up on the fly pole discussion on the town green, town common here from the town hall. Uh, you talked about a second flight pole as as a pole for commemorative flags. Uh, they're for keeping the. Flag at the war memorial to the American flag and POW, POW flag. Um, so, uh, you know, one possibility is is a pole by behind the benches at the fountain. Uh, just as I look at the green, that that seemed like potentially a good location for the second pole. Uh, you you did come across or. P W came up with. An idea of telescoping, telescoping. A poll that can be can. Go up and down. That is a possibility, obviously, we don't have to go with something like that, I just thought if it's something that's not used. Very often, then maybe it's something that we want to lower raise, lower the profile. So this, the one, I think was a. Seventeen foot or twenty one foot model, and I believe when it. Collapses down, it's it's like a. Three to four foot high, so like a baller, you would see. So looking for your feedback and and thoughts.
Okay, well, I'm I'm certainly an advocate for the second poll, that location looked. Good to me, I mean, I took a look at it, it's kind of centrally located with regard to the. The green area. I'm curious, I know that there was some concern about the height of that pole versus the height of our existing pole. Can't be much more than. Twenty feet. Or so, I don't, I don't know how either. Do we have to know?
So I'll get, I'll make sure to get the dimensions and the elevation.
How how was something like this installed, is that what do they have to dig some sort of a hole and put in a cement?
Postal digger type thing.
John, I have a question, does this have to go before the historic district commission?
A flag pole. That's a very good question. I would have to look at the historic district commission. Rules. On on that sort of thing, because flying flags does not, when it's on public property.
I know, didn't the one memorial, didn't the memorial have to go before the HTC?
Yes, that did, that did, as as an installation.
So now we're talking about installing it.
Yeah, I think I think that. Is probably. Needs to, needs needs to be done. Have other, I don't, I don't know, at this point, we just know that this flag pole exists, we don't know if there are the towns that have used this or what the story is. I mean, I saw the information you provided.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know.
Now, you go back to the manufacturer and ask. Some, you know. Have dealt with this.
How often do we get requests to put up commemorative flags? And once we have that, then we'll get all kinds of requests.
In that it gives, it brings attention to a flag pole. I mean, we've, how many years have we flown the the pride flag, has that been? Three, four?
There was the year where. There was a banner.
At one point hanging. Right.
Was that the first year? Because I think that may have been the first year after the. War memorial is. Okay. Ah, that would have been relatively easy.
Yes.
So four or five.
I think so.
So let's say it's been five years and that's the only group that's ever come up before town hall, before the town.
This point. So. I I don't see that putting up a second flag pole is going to change. People's thinking about that, think about that, but.
Is it a good, if I may? Offer a suggestion, I I think what Greg has proposed is a nice plan. That maybe we can keep in our back pocket. So that if we encounter a scenario where two groups. Come at the same time and we want to fly two commemorative flags, we have. An option that we can. Execute on. But to Brian's point, do we, do we need to execute on that right now and and install it? Today, you know, that that's my question, I I like having the plan in case we need it.
Yeah, well, and 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 that goes directly to the point of the second poll. Because the first flag pole now is a memorial flag pole. And looking over the various towns and the the various. Various policies they have put in place. There really aren't any towns that are flying other flags on memorial flag poles that have a commemorative flag on that flag pole. And that includes Boston, which really precipitated this whole thing with the Supreme Court. They were not flying their commemorative flags on a flag pole with an American flag. It was a separate flag pole, so that's really what's driving this. Not that they would be two, and I would not expect that there would be two flags at the same time, that would be very rare. It's just that it's. The flag pole has been co-opted into the memorial. And my feeling is, is that really should be the American flag DOW flag and that's it, and a second flag pole. For any commemorative flag at any time. And the research that I've looked at and then looked at some of this stuff as well in terms of looking at the towns and because this finding only came out a year ago. There aren't very many towns that have been. Assertive enough to try and put together plans. But many of those plans, all, you know, it's kind of split between whether they're going to fly any commemorative flags at all. Or if they're going to fly commemorative flags. And they have to put together a policy under which they're going to do that, but in all of those instances, it has not been a memorial. It has been a separate flag pole, separate from the American flag, the the flag that was flying the American flag pole, the the American flag. At that town center. So that's what the driving issue is here. And, you know, having a small, something that. That that shrinks down and is only three or four feet high, I think that kind of makes sense because. If there's only one instance a year, that you're going to do that, you really don't need a flag pole that is. Kind of right up there.
I think then perhaps our next action. Greg, you will look to see if there are any. Communities that have used that or anybody who has used this.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Perhaps, John, you could go to the historic district commission and see. An installation like this will require their approval and what we have to do to get that.
I think to Brian's comment, I think it does. Yeah, I think it probably does, I don't think it's a. I I can, I can facilitate all of that.
Give or take their schedule, we'll talk about this again. After we know what what's going on.
No other self.
Great. Other, the next is the open meeting agenda. And that one. That it came up in discussion that there are people who would like to just be able to express opinions and. Ask questions without. Involving deliberation. And. That the select board would have. A meeting. To hear from the. My first question is is. How is that going to get us in legal trouble? And.
So you can certainly hold, just just like you have some. Open public comment at the beginning of the meeting, you can. You can dedicate a meeting to open comments. Can respond to questions, but you won't make decisions during those. Okay, successfully, you may say, well, you may agree to put that on as an agenda item for a future meeting. But in general, it's really designed to. Allow the public to. To ask questions and get some information.
What what, we haven't really pursued this Thursday, we had this Thursday night thing where. Was it once a month, I think we did maybe two of them.
Right, you talked, you talked about.
Yeah, which is less formal than this, it's just that you're there. When the town is open, when the when the town hall is open on Thursday nights.
So we talked about a couple of things, we talked about having a couple of you just.
And and I was, I was at one of them, yes, that's correct.
Conversation corner.
That's correct.
So that. Versus this is a more. Formal.
This is more formal, yeah.
Where it's 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 an actual meeting that you are holding. But you're.
We're all there.
You're all there. Right, a quorum is is needed and and you're allowing the public to come in and and ask questions. And that's that more formal, slightly more formal setting, but obviously not as formal as a. As a set meeting with fixed agenda.
And I think as we move along with that one, maybe even. Quarterly say there will also be a department head. To sit here. Say Chuck can be here to answer questions as well.
Right, so so part of it could be dedicated to a particular topic or theme. Or department, which you're suggesting. And the other portion of could be open air. Yeah, I think so, there's different ways to structure this.
About making ourselves more available. And I think that unlike the coffee corner. This is like, that would be like an informal bump into somebody, I think the the more of a semi-formal kind of atmosphere here. Will give the public the sense that we're taking things seriously.
I have a question. I thought that what we did in preparation for the town meeting, the special town meeting, was kind of our first iteration of this concept. Where we would. So I I feel like we've already started it. And I guess the question would be, how do we feel it went? And if we feel it went well. What might our next topic or subject matter be?
I would suggest that we leave the subject matter. Largely, maybe we could mention some topics that ought to be discussed, but I'd like to leave it more open. The 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 two forums that we had were really focused on the town meeting articles. And I think there are other issues. And the senior center.
Have you been talking about having a regular scheduled monthly?
I think we have a one off. My. Thought about it was to have a a one off. With some suggested topics, but be willing to hear from anybody about anything.
To that end, the rotunda thing forum can be folded into that, it's just that it's got one item on the agenda. To try and get some sort of a schedule. Actually rolling or some. Yeah, you're you're looking about like the third, the fourth Thursday of the month or fourth.
That was my interpretation of what I heard you say earlier.
I wonder if it makes sense to delay the general open meeting until September or.
Okay.
So that people are back, people aren't on vacation and.
August is not going to be a good.
August is kind of a hard month to.
Something is going away.
So. Let's, let's. Discuss this again, and plan to set a date in September sometime. Sometime in August when we know where we're going to be in in September.
Okay.
So the bottom line is, the concept has some merit. And we'll pursue that. Once the summer.
As as the summer ones.
Yes, okay.
Target your first one in September.
Yes, that's fine.
FY twenty five. Budget priorities, how and share.
So, yeah, we've. Talking about. What your year long cycle of budget work. One of the goals was to try to identify some. Some research topics or priority areas that. Would benefit from some homework, if you will, over the course of the summer. Prior to. Fall kickoff, when we, when department heads are. Very much focused on. You know, numbers of blind islands. But before we get to that, it would be helpful to have. Some time to delve into perhaps some topics that you feel would be helpful. To do some research, do some comparisons of other communities, perhaps, or just to explore some alternatives. Investigate the different uses of technology, for example. Et et cetera, so at at your last joint meeting with with the plant, the finance committee. Certainly, capital planning, facility planning came up as a as a high priority. It was mentioned to to do. More benchmarking with other communities. Comparing our departmental operations with similar sized towns and their departments. It was mentioned about the fire deputy position in particular. Topic of wanting to explore that further. And the whole issue of reserve funds and how large of the fund balance should is appropriate, what's what's the base? That we are using as as the. As the as the. Their basis. Do you just look at town operating excluding? The school excluding the enterprise funds. Combination, some some combination. So those were a few topics that came out of that meeting, those were mostly coming from. The finance committee, so I wanted to make sure that. You were thinking. Your own ideas as well, and if you agree with these, that's fine, but if there are additional ones. Then it'll be important to hear about those as well.
Well, I thought we had a discussion on the capital planning and. Back whenever, that there weren't enough. Long range planning topics that were in our long range planning for capital expenses that reflected that. To think about the kinds of money that's involved. Because it's a lot.
Right, it is, so certainly the facility plan will help.
Yes, I I mean, it's maybe a little bit early for that, but not much, it's only a few weeks early. So, but I I would like to see all of those types of items. Put into the capital budget, and I understand you look at them and say, a lot of these are going to need debt of some sort or another. And I'm not putting the school necessarily on there, because that's really. The school committee, but certainly. A financial impact here and it has to be considered somehow, but everything else.
We want to be cognizant of.
Yes.
The next big one is is the Essex.
Yes, but that's that's what, that's what I'm talking about, but. There's a lot of deferred maintenance here. And maybe our capital budget, which right now runs three or four, should really be more like four or five.
Yes.
Which would push the cap, you know, push the tax rate up a little bit, but. We've got to catch up with some of these things. I mean, I'm just looking at, just wrote down a list that, you know, yeah, the school, yeah, but we don't know what's going to happen with PFAS, the senior center thing, library situation. The whole facilities thing with TPW. Rotunda, I mean, all of this adds up to. Serious cash.
It's 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 real money.
And most of those items are not necessarily on. Long term budget, maybe half of them are. But, you know, some of them are not, and they they need to be.
And and the vulnerability study.
Storm mitigation, that's, yeah, and there's another one.
Suggesting that we need to move not only the. We're our treatment plan, but also the police department, the fire department.
But let, I mean, th- these are just numbers that have to get out there so that people know.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, so I think we're poking at all the right things. But before we start. You know, adding numbers to budgets, what we need is the the integrated plan, right, so to Greg, to your point, I think the facilities master plan is a really big piece. The coastal vulnerability plan is another big piece. However, I think an area that is not. Um, however, I think an area that is not been sufficiently looked at. Is the internal operations, and it may be kind of covered a little bit under B. But we do a lot of stuff manually that is unnecessary. Um, we're not investing in any type of technology. So that we can, um, you know, be more efficient and, um, you know, that that would affect our labor mix. So I do feel like that benchmarking item B really needs to. Be comprehensive, not from a budget standpoint, but from a how do they operate standpoint. Um, and then I also think that we spent a significant amount of time last summer and fall. Looking at our um select board goals, and I I think we made a lot of good progress on them, but it is time to revisit those. Um, do a check, see how much progress we did make, what is left to do. And that should also inform our our thinking.
Uh, Kathy, do you have any specific examples of things that you'd like to see automated?
Well, so one of the the select board goals that we talked about was um service, I forget how we phrased it, our service delivery. You know, um, how can we um? It was had to do with how we deliver our services. I forget exactly how we phrased it, but that's an area where technology can play a really big role. Um, also, I believe as part of the governance project, we talked about permitting. You know, it's one of those processes that, yes, it has some automation now, but can we do more to uh make it more friendly? And and when you can, when you have a process, whatever it is. That has a lot of um compliance checks, if you will, which a lot of government processes do. That is, those are ideal for automation. You can automate a lot of those compliance checks instead of having a human being. Make sure everything gets done properly. So those were just two things that came to top of mind.
I've got a question along this technology la- line. Greg, you you go to annually to uh like a town managers. Or town town heads. Convention or meeting, et cetera.
So so, yes, there's, well, there's the annual MMA.
Okay, okay.
Mathis Municipal Association, that's the big one in Boston every year, and then managers have a of fall and spring conference.
All right, I'm 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 just wondering, I mean, because Kathy makes a good point, and private industry is pushing technology all the time. I don't get the sense that government agencies are necess- I mean, just look at how the IRS is managing things. And social security administration, and if you try to benchmark yourself, you gotta find out everybody's in the same boat.
Well, I I could, I would just add one comment. I think there was some um innovation. Or some experimentation going on with the pandemic funds. Um, I know some towns did a mobile town hall, you know, they to reduce their facilities foot footprint. They were trying out bringing services to customers instead of having people come to town hall. Other people revamped their websites. And uh, you know, made it in, you know, upgraded their four-one-ones, uh, three-one-one systems to report problems. You know, rather than sending an email to Chuck if there's a pothole, you know, they had some other more efficient way of of, you know, getting the work noticed. There were, there was some innovation done, I know during the pandemic, but I'm not sure how much of that worked. And and you know what people's feelings are about it. But I I just, I just think there's, anytime you have manual work being done in an area with high. A high degree of compliance, that is like a a super. Uh, place to go look for automation that can help with efficiency.
So I'm I'm just wondering, in these meetings, they have technology sessions. Where you get, where you get, oh, that's an idea, let's bring that back, that's an idea, you know.
Uh, one thing that's been helping us of late, so we we joined. Um, the North Shore Collaborative based on the Danvers. They are providing more some IT oversight and capacity building. Particularly around cybersecurity and network management. Where the longer term, we should be able to limit posting our own servers, you know, we can have it all. All based out of the Danvers servers. So Essex has moved to that model.
Oh, Greg, I'm sorry, I just didn't want to forget something. You just mentioned something that um. The cyber area, when we, if you recall, the audit report that we all listened to, uh, was it in the spring? Our number one risk, what they said it was, it was cyber attacks. Um, and so anything that's on our risk register for the town, we should also take a look at that. From a budgeting standpoint, is there something that we need to invest in in order to address a known risk?
Yes, yeah, so um, so with with Danvers that are are IT vendors, then. Something that has been a pretty high priority that has made some significant upgrades over the last year and a half. We're slated to make some additional upgrades this summer. With particularly along the line to cybersecurity.
That that may be an area where we could use some help evaluating. Uh, technologies that are not particularly well, I mean, outside of the 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 scope of of town hall. My. Suggest, the town is full of technology types. I think that we could get some good advice. Or at least some interesting advice. By. Going against our goals and considering having another committee. Advisory.
But I, so that is something that is pretty well suited to a uh. Something less formal.
The task force.
Well, it's uh, so it's something that that, for example, Andrea and myself could. Form a group of advisors.
Okay.
Uh, without going to the full.
Okay.
Process of you setting up that community, it's a little less formal. Uh, mechanism, if if staff say, okay, we would like to have some informal advisors.
Okay.
For our work.
Greg, I like that idea a lot, and I think the way you're thinking about it makes makes a ton of sense. Um, I do think there are a lot of us in the town with this background, so I I do think it would be an ideal. I I still think we should have kind of like an open call for that, right? Just even though it's not a formal committee that. Um, you know, that may come under that policy we adjusted. Um, I I think that that would be a a good way to make sure you get a variety of talent, and I'm and I'm happy to discuss with you. Um, you know, what that might look like.
Um, that's kind of gone a long way from budget priorities down in school, but. Um. Does. Anyone have? Suggestions that weren't listed, I mean, the the finance. Lots of things that they would like to look at, and we've gone over large capital. Um, but is there something that you need to do for this year's up in this year's operating budget?
Well, I I mean, I've I've got a question not necessarily related to this year's operating budget, but. Just with regard to the school budget, now I know the school was gonna, they're in another budget cycle. Are they going to make a report to the finance committee or to anybody in an interim basis to say? We're solving our problem, or we still don't know exactly what we're doing yet, because I know that we'll be wrestling with the deficit again. And I don't think we're necessarily gonna get blindsided, because we all know there's a challenge here, but would like to know something. I don't know, interim like in September or October. And I don't know where the school committee, school management stands vis a vis us. And we ask them to come in and say, okay, where are you?
I I mean, yes.
All right.
Um, you could, you can certainly request that.
Okay.
And I think it it's fair to pose the question to the school committee, but what are your thoughts? Sooner or later, about how do you want to address? The the challenges that we saw come to ahead this this past year.
Would it be unusual, uncalled for, or creative? If we're to have a joint select board meeting and have, uh, as opposed to them. Going to coming to Manchester and speak to uh the school committee, coming to speak to Manchester Select Board. And then going again to speak to Essex.
So.
We all sat together in one room.
No, so in the past, we had done that, not often, but it has happened. That you have both finance committees, both boards of.
Yeah, but the finance.
Most select boards and the school committee all all in a large room.
And with, there's nothing missed to misinterpret.
Hmm, I think you're optimistic, but.
I'm I'm naive, what can I say?
But I I would like to see some event like that happen in October, say. Did you say, Kathy, where are you? And just along, you know, and that puts a little bit of pressure on them. They know when they show up, they should have something to say about. Well, we know this and this, and this isn't gonna be, but we're trying this and this.
I like where you're going, John. I guess um. I would expect that Pam and and the school committee are. Thinking about that timeline themselves already.
Yeah, I hope so. I'm sure they are.
Right, so I I think it's right, fair, very fair to ask the question, but um honestly, I I would hope to hear. From them before October, um, but I think it would be good for maybe Greg to give Pam a quick call and say, you know. What what's your timeline look like? We we all know we need to work together. Have you fleshed anything out? Terms of a timeline, so we can plan this in with our other meetings, because we're ready to go and get started and help.
When when do they usually come up with their budgets, like January first, around the first of January or?
So they come up with a preliminary budget.
December.
December, yeah.
Yes, December, early, I've been. And then um.
So it's not unreasonable to ask them the first of October.
Yeah, absolutely.
Say, okay.
I would say that's the latest.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important that discussions get started before. So, yeah, happy to check in with. With the school committee and see. And and also conversations with with your colleagues, investors. You can have some informal conversations initially here and then at some point.
I think it's wise to probably have them in the mix, because they were important, they're an important part of the mix, and of course, uh, critical to. Making everything fit together.
Yeah, absolutely.
And whatever the changes are, I know it always gets magnified for them because of their situation.
Yeah, a a major. Major question will be, does does the uh portion of it formally to be revisited? And that'll be, that'll be a major point of discussion. The sooner we get into that, probably.
I think also there's, um, by having new joint meetings. Sometimes we don't, we don't have a sense of what's going on in the town of Essex. Okay, what the voters in Essex think. Okay, so if we can sit with uh Essex Select Board, get their input and get a better sense. Of, as opposed to having these diverse, uh, you know.
What we have been doing. With our collaborative, so-called collaboration meetings with a small group. That didn't fall into the open meeting law, and that has currently done itself. Blackball, I think. Um, because it was felt that decisions were being made in secret by a small group. And and that was where we got, that that's where the information came from. About what Essex was thinking and what Manchester was thinking and what the school was trying to do. But um. That has stopped. It's, it was a. I think a useful place, because nothing was recorded.
But.
We could, people could be very frank, but.
You need to, you need to make sure that. There's open communications for sure, but there's also a need for sort of a working group to. To have those frank conversations.
And and.
But but it is, but we need to make make sure, at least it happens, we need to make sure it happens, is is the reporting backup.
To to that point, that's that's not going that route. I don't know how many times during the uh. My, the weeks leading up to the uh. Special town meeting, the additional town meetings, Dunkin' Donuts. The old time was, I don't know what's going on in Essex, why don't we just pass this, you know, they 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 weren't walking in Essex shoes. All right, and they saw that as, I think someone said, it's another twenty-seven hundred dollars. Or whatever numbers they were throwing out at, okay, whereas you take a look and say, Essex has been taxed. To the extreme right now, so I think that it's it's a good idea to make everyone aware. Of what's going on, and that's what I'm getting towards, because I I heard it from the the townsfolk in 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 Manchester. And that only creates uh animosity ethic. And if you want to keep the district running smooth, we have to address that.
So I think where we, where we come at this point. Um. Is is that we have no particular. Um. We are, we are, we need to look at. Methods, means of automating. Um, and that's something that we should look at in the next, i- in this next budget. Try and find tools that can reduce the amount of work that has to be done in town hall. Um. Other than that. We have lots of concerns about major facilities over the next ten or fifteen. Next five years and next fifteen. Um. And that we need to set up. A meeting in late September, early October with. Um, the school committee, the finance committees and the select boards, talk about where the schools, how, what are you doing this? Is that a fair summary of of um FY twenty-five budget priorities?
This is a, this will bow on that.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and I think we're ready to the rest of the county administrators reporting.
Yes, okay. So talk about rotunda, we talked a little bit about the vulnerability action plan, I see that being targeted. Sort of following discussions.
I can say report is now ready.
Yes, we'll get, we'll make sure you get that.
Yeah, oh, it's 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 not available yet, but I mean.
I think it's been, I'll have to double check, I think it's been posted to the website, I know that it was a June thirtieth deadline to get it to.
Okay.
So, uh.
Pretty recent.
Um, so, yes, that's that's just happened. Uh, but we'll make sure that you uh you get copies of that as well. Um, it's, so that'll continue to be a work in progress. Uh, governance project, uh, it was a good meeting, uh, was that last week? And uh, uh, the department heads and. Chairs of different committees and and boards. Gathered in a room, I think a lot of good sharing of information and just the sort of connections, which was part of the point. And.
The overall conclusion was that we need better communication.
Yep.
Every, that was the one thing that everybody agreed on.
That was very consistent. Uh, that was a surprise, that was surprising. Uh, and these cut, these meetings, I think, are designed in part to help with that communication flow, so people thought. You know, two or three of these summit meetings, if you will, a year makes sense, uh, there may be. Um, benefit, there may be benefit to having clusters of different boards and committees meet in between. Bigger meetings, uh, you know, groups that are have more uh similar. Periods and and what, so, you know, your land, land management committees and boards. Could meet as a as a subgroup. Could meet as a as a subgroup.
So is it to say these these meetings that maybe they'll be twice a year that will, in fact, not only. Did we find that this is a problem, but these meetings are also the solution to that.
Correct.
So maybe that's enough, at least at this point, to solve. Part of that problem.
Yes, I think so. And so a lot of different ideas that were drafted down, those are still being reviewed. See a more detailed set of recommendations coming out of those as well. So I know that. That Kathy and Susan, Susan Beckman and Debbie and Sue will be sitting down and going over those. Assembling some of those recommendations and putting all my teeth on them to to bring back before for future for for future discussion. So clearly, communications, the top website, ways to improve that, we're we're front and center. So good progress, a good milestone for that effort, and the work, we'll we'll continue on with that. And five here, I jotted down the whole issue of pickleball courts and noise issue. I think it's something that. It would make sense for. For you to meet with the parking committee, once that they have had their meeting, we're going to be having a focused discussion on it. On the twelfth next week. Part of that discussion will be reviewing a a report that they have, they commissioned to look at ways to mitigate. Sound emanating from the courts. So it's 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 an issue not just for Manchester, it's it's an issue that has hit many communities throughout the country. Just depending on location of the of the courts. Proximity to to homes and concerns that that folks have. So I think it's something that you're.
Circulate that report to, I have a copy, but I think grass before.
Yeah, so make sure everyone has.
The what the consultants copy?
Yes. Yeah, I think everyone, I think everyone got a copy. We'll double check, but I'm pretty sure everyone has.
Not only did we have, we've mostly read them.
Yes, yes. So I think next, next week's meeting will be an important one. Thinking it might make sense then for you to ask the parking committee. To come into you to to talk about what they are recommending as as next steps.
So that would be on our meeting on the seventh.
So I'm thinking that that would be a topic for the seventeenth.
Meeting on on the twelfth, is that hybrid?
Yes, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, the, yeah, they typically said with with the. But yes, they could. There's people, an opportunity to dial in as well. So I think it's something that deserves you getting up to speed on. And hearing more from from the committee in terms of what they think might be a good next one. So stay tuned for that, we'll we'll target. See if the members of the committee can attend your meeting on the seventeenth for for following. We we do get concerns about Ocean, Ocean Street and the condition of it. Concerns about the attention that White Beach gets versus Singing Beach in particular. Some some would like to see a lot more attention, others others tend to like this. For casual nature of White Beach, so we do hear both both sides of that. But at at some point, we we need to have focused discussion on on the the future of Ocean Street and what we do. Or don't do. To try to protect those two beaches in particular. Very difficult to do. Maybe permitting will be a major challenge in terms of any new structures that might get built. I see walls or remittments. Would be very difficult to to get the Army Corps and Captain nine hundred one permits that would be necessary for that. You can get, you get permits for repairing existence. New. Structure, she like that.
Can we? Could we get a grant? To study what the alternatives are?
We can, you can try again, yes. The, no, certainly need to. Make sure we have community support for that.
How can we? What can we do to try and get community support for someone to actually study what the alternatives are?
Yeah, so how do we do that? We we hold some public meetings about just that.
Now, on our list of public meetings coming up in September and October.
We can, we can add this to the list.
We should probably add Ocean Street.
I think that makes sense to do. In the meantime, we can research what possibilities might be there.
Now, you said we looked, and I don't, when when was that we turned down a grant at one point? Several years ago.
You're right, this was several years ago. There's a lot of concern that the the focus of the grant was abandoned, that that became a lightning line. People who. There were segment of the population that was very much opposed to even contemplating.
Ah, would that be a segment that lived out there? Okay, so. And they still live out there.
Yes.
And they know this.
Yes. But. Not studying it doesn't fix it.
No.
So I think. You know, in hindsight, clearly the mistake was that there that. The focus was too much on. On one solution, about looking at what are the possible solutions?
Okay, was this like a preliminary, a presentation by a group that would study it and would say, hey, these are the things that we might come up with, or I mean, huh, okay. So as part of the interview process or whatever for this.
Well, yes, and, you know, similar to what we've gone through with the village vulnerability. Action plan. It'd be a more focused area, obviously, it's we're talking a much smaller area. But it needs that sort of methodical, here's the data, here are the projections. Here are, you know, five or six options. Here's some, you know, rough estimate magnitude of cost for these options. What do you think, folks?
So we could ask the same question again and maybe get the same kind of response. Because it was five or six years ago, I I don't know when this was, but I think it's worth asking the question. Yeah, we we can.
And and maybe just not get. So discouraged by the reaction of a part of the neighborhood.
Well, and and again, maybe it's hold those public meetings ahead of time before the grant submitted to make sure everyone is aware of what. What the parameters of the study are and that that we are open to an array of possibilities, but we need to at least. Start that. Yeah.
We don't know them. We don't know what we don't know yet.
This was a grant, I I need to study something, it was like twenty thousand dollars or something or forty thousand, I don't know.
Yeah, I I want to say it was the thirty to forty thousand. I'm not remembering exactly.
I I tend to think we should probably do that because I don't think the noise is going to stop.
I agree with that. I agree.
And so I I think we ought to explore.
But we need a plan.
Explain to explore that.
Yep, and then before we have a plan, we need to know what the facts.
Another topic, not related, but another topic is is parking and traffic. Enforcement, speed enforcement. Parking placards enforcement, there's a list of of enforcement issues revolving around. Traffic patterns, parking, speeding, et cetera, and. How? How hard and fast should should staff be in terms of enforcement? Or what the policies might be. So we we certainly hear from from residents a lot about, you know. Not enough enforcement, speeders aren't getting ticketed, parking is not controlled and regulated enough. But then when staff, you know, report and enforce them without much latency, people also complain. So there's there's a balance here that we struggle to find. So again, it may be worth a topic at a future meeting where we we talk about. Approaches to enforcement, do you allow? Do you typically give one warning, you give people basically. A freebie isn't really the right word I'm looking for, but you give him a break on the first offense, but then a second offense, you you ratchet it up.
The only comment I have on that is in one of these topics here on the. In this paragraph is we have an appeals process. If we're not going to, and everything I read, everything I've been told. On on the parking issue, it seemed like that was a classic. Example of why we have an appeals process. And it was just denied. Okay, so and again, I'm just looking at it, I I'm not speaking facts, I'm speaking what I've read. Right, because I don't know what the, no one knows what the facts are. But if everything that I've read is correct, there was a registered car in the town of Manchester, it didn't have a parking sticker on it. Okay, so then you go through the appeals process, you show the car is registered, we just neglected to put a sticker on it. Okay, to me, that satisfies what would be a proper appeal and the reason for granting. Okay, but a a a hard, black and white, there's no, I'm sorry, you're not going to get the. We're not going to grant it, then let's just pull the appeal process altogether. I mean, how many cows drive around town? I know right now, my inspection stickers are three day, six six days late. But more like a registration sticker in the car, a little sticker that goes on license plate. If you're pulled over. All right, you may have just neglected to put the sticker on, they're not going to cite you. They're going to say, put the sticker on. Because the car is registered and insured and it's street legal, it's just you've neglected to put a sticker on. So that's what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm I'm using this as a as an example, I just think if we have an appeals process, then we should. Take advantage.
Who manages that, Diane? Appeals process?
Right, so the so the town clerk acts as the parking clerk.
Judge and everything.
A different process there too, if you think it's warranted.
She's been a clerk for quite some time.
But if you're going to have this discussion, I certainly would want her. And have police in as well. To hear hear different perspectives and to to see where where you want to take this.
Just out of curiosity, why? One of the new stickers, why do they end in December?
I think she wants to transition to a calendar year.
But why?
I I think in her mind, it was it was easier to track, easier for residents to track.
And non-residents, by the way. And non-residents, by the way, I know a lot of people are driving around with. A couple of people are driving around with resident stickers who don't live in town, and it was mailed to their home.
So I think the stickers say a year, right? They don't.
Yeah, they just.
They say the year, they say twenty twenty three.
The stickers say December thirty first.
Also, I haven't even looked at it, I just put on.
So the old one, I don't think.
The old ones were May thirty first.
Did they say?
Yes, they said.
Yeah, May thirty first, they say that's like a six month period.
And so this one is a is a seven month sticker.
So there'll be new ones mailed out.
Yes, they will.
And 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 the the goal was to put the stickers in with the excise tax. Bills and say postage, and that's not going to work in December.
Yes, it's not, it's not working anytime, unfortunately.
Well, it's something that two years, so.
So we can have, we can, that can be part of the conversation. So it makes sense to.
Okay, that's. We've done that, it's not my turn.
Yeah, no, I don't think, it's 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 been quite a while since we had a conversation, I would add. The the voting placards or tax point, some some morning holders were. Trying to use a voting packet to park out of tucks.
But voting placards didn't have anything that tied them to a car and. Somebody was xeroxing them and handing them out to his friends.
Was that right? I mean, it does have your car's number plate on.
No, no, not the voting plaque.
So.
This is, this is a piece of paper that you put on your windshield.
To park right out here.
To park.
Right along the fence.
Or or wherever.
That must be typical of what the, some of the retailers use too.
The business placards, I think, are reasonably well organized.
I used to have the voting placard, but it didn't make sense.
I mean, they're they're supposed to be for people who don't live in town, who have moorings, so that they can get to their boat.
Okay, I use it because I didn't want to walk any farther than I just wanted to park against the fence here and go down the the dock.
Okay.
Okay, and there are only six or eight slots there. But it wasn't worth twenty five bucks to me. I'll just park back.
But i- in in fact, the ones that are out this year. Have a mooring number on them, but not.
Okay, so they're different now.
But not a.
License.
License plate.
Oh, okay, so this is.
That's a relatively easy fit.
Yes, it's a very easy fit, I just, yeah.
And then for the the bigger question about whether. Their value of the tax or not. That's another topic. Of discussion.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of a tux, in other words, to be able, if you've got that, I don't care where you're coming from, if you've got a placard, you can park here. You don't have to have a parking sticker. Plaque is good enough.
You can't get a resident sticker in theory, unless you're a resident.
But there are boaters.
But there are boaters who are not residents, who are not residents.
So they need that.
And and one solution we could, we could say is just we we don't do that at all, if you want to park. Talk to the boatyards, they've got lots of space where they would have had boats in winter.
I I understand the problem. Because I don't know, the boats are not Manchester residents, maybe more. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, this would be. And I understand the the work on the placards and you you know, I mean, one one solution begets two or three other problems. And you don't know that, you're going to work them through it.
Okay, so those are the topics.
Okay.
We'll get those scheduled in the coming months for the session.
A. Motion on. That this left board entering the executive session for map general law, chapter thirty, section twenty one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if no other meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the chair so declares protective and not to return to open session for MGL chapter. Thirty, section twenty one A six, consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Again, not.
So moved, second for both of us.
Just reading all that.
Is the meeting ready? Kathy?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
I say yes. And so we close the open meeting and go into a second play.
Perfect.
That's it, Kathy, can you hear us?
I can.
We can't hear them.
Yes, I can hear you.
Speak again, please.
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes. I'll have to remember to turn that down next week, but you still have three participants in? Okay?
Got me.
No, this. From five monitor. Oh, is it that? Oh, no, okay, it says it's still recording, but that's offline, I've. I've shut it off, so you're good. Um, the only thing that I I would advise is keep an eye on your participants, because. Or or lock it down, I don't know if you can do that, but, yeah, I just don't want anyone else to show up for it.
I appreciate that, that's good advice.